Okay, we'll call the regular meeting of the Eastline Board of Selectment for September 6th to order. And we just said the Pledge of Allegiance when we had the town meeting, we'll dispense with that. And prior to that, we did not, we did have it on the air, we had the recognition for the U-12 Little League Boys Baseball Team, which was the state champions this year, so we had a chance to recognize them. So are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items?
No.
See, none, any delegations, ready anyone like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go through the approval of the meeting minutes?
Yes, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2023 as submitted.
Second?
We moved to second, any comments? All those in favor, oh, go ahead, Ann. Okay, any other comments or corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as amendments, and if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carries unanimously?
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2023 as submitted.
Moved, yeah, moved to second, rise and, any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And, Chakalau abstained, and the special meeting of August 29th.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of August 29th, 2023 as submitted.
For a second?
Second?
Since seconded. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Moving on for the consent calendar.
Yes, move to approve the consent calendar for the September 6th, 2023 meeting in the amount of $23,222.60.
Is there a second?
Second?
Seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Moving on, just really briefly on the charter revision, the questions have been attached to the ballot, correct Wendy? Wendy Sims is up there, so they will be handed out at the November election, too. While we're here, too, there have been some questions, why didn't we have the referendum, the possible proposed referendum on the purchase of the properties Hathaway, Azagachi, and Brainerd Road at the same time? Those that can vote in a referendum can't necessarily vote in a general election, so that would make it extremely confusing, because if you're just a property owner to start trying to go through with people that are voting regularly, it would make it very difficult on the registrars in there, so that's why it was decided not to have the two at the same time, because there will be different people voting. Moving on, discussion and action items with proposed bulky waste transfer station commercial pickup fees. Joe? Joe Beggar, our Public Works Director?
Thank you for having me. So I put together a memo. Right now, as of July 1st, we had increases in our bulky waste costs, so when people go to the transfer station and drop off bulky waste, they charge, they get charged a fee, but we're actually paying the tip fee for the bulky waste. That went up from 95 to $105. So we were trying to, over the last, and all these costs have been soaring, so I've been always each year trying to keep up the cost and kind of moving the cost to the people using that service to keep up with, so it's, even though we have more costs, we also have the revenue offsetting it. So with the bulky waste, I'd like to move it up from 9.45 cents, which is currently is to 10.5 cents, doesn't sound like a lot, but that's for one pound, so when someone drops off their couch or all the other stuff, they're getting a benefit of having to go somewhere where they can get rid of it, but I want to keep those fees up. So that, that's the first part. The second one is, and I said this in, I'm the president of SCARA, SCARA charges the town for all our trash. SCARA increased their tip fee $2. When we have, for all the residents that roll their can out, even the businesses that have a can, when you roll it out, there's no cost to anyone, but if you ever see the dumpsters, if there's in any strip malls or something like that, they have a dumpster, the same goes, like a CWPM or a local commercial vendor picks the trash up, goes to, goes to the trash facility in Lisbon, and says it's from Eastline, and they charge Eastline for that trash. We then bill back to commercial vendor, and we've been having, as most towns do, an admin surcharge fee to that, so the tipping fee was 61.25. So we've been trying to keep a $5 spread, so that's another thing that since July, we've still been charging the 64, and we're kind of losing out on, because we had that increase, but we didn't pass it on to the commercial vendors. So I'd like, first of all, I'd like to try to have both of these fees come online, since, I don't know, what's the, what date you would like to set it, I didn't put a date in there, I guess we could agree upon them, but the sooner the better, because the longer this waits, the less revenue the town has, and the more we have to incur the cost.
Okay. Before we decide on when it becomes effective, any questions for Joe or all of these items? No? Having, oh, I'm tired, just, go ahead.
Yeah, just in terms of notice to the public, what would be, what would be a sensible time between now, which is the 6th, and then?
We could say September 18th, Monday, well, the transfer station isn't open on Mondays, so we could give two weeks' notice and actually post a notice and make it September 19th. The, I would like the commercial one to be effective as soon as possible, because you don't really have to post notice to the commercial vendors, you just start charging them a different rate. So my recommendation would be effective tomorrow on the commercial vendor, September 7th, and say effective September 19th or September 26th at the transfer station for bulky waste. That gives, we could put a two-week posting up there that we're changing the fee.
Okay.
And we'll put it on the website, too.
Okay, I'm perfectly good with the commercial one on the 7th and the 26th.
26.
That's what I'd like to see, give the town, yeah, three, yeah, three weeks.
Why not just make it the end of the month, September 30th? It's convenient for people to remember, it's the end of the month.
The 26th would be their first day back for that week, I think it's easier.
So effective, so.
Yeah, it's easier to start for the week off, that's, I think, why you picked that date.
I think it would be a bit of a courtesy to the commercial ones to not give them just a one-day's notice. As a business, as a business owner, I, I just think that it's, I just think that it's, to just say it's tomorrow, I think that that's kind of short notice.
Do you want to have the same effective date to 26? I'm just trying to make sure from a revenue standpoint, where I was hoping to get this done in July, it's just busy in the summer and some of that, and we're, you know, now we're in September, and it's already been July, August, and September that we've been paying more but getting less.
Are the commercial businesses going to get some kind of notification, or they're just going to get it in the bill?
They'll get it in their bill.
Yeah. So it's not going to be, I mean, they're not going to get notification if we delay it a week?
I'd be surprised if all the businesses in Southeastern Connecticut aren't in the same position of, because everyone's doing the same thing with commercial vendors, I bet just everyone kind of put them in in July, August, where it's happening, so we almost gave a two-and-a-half-month reprieve already. So whatever that date, if you want to have the date, then September 26th. The way that happens is, we get a list of every month from SCARA what our bill is, and then it breaks up what our municipal trash, which is what Eastline delivers, and what other vendors deliver. There's only one or two other vendors that deliver on our account, and then that goes to Kevin's staff, and they bill back, so they'll only get that bill once, once a month, so.
And right now, Joe, we're not getting what we're, we're basically losing money, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, SCARA increased it by $2, and we didn't increase it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I understand the town people, but, you know, the haulers are aware of the thing, all the situations. Where we stand on, I'm comfortable with this, with the 7th and the 26th, 7th for commercial hauler pickup fees, and the 26th for proposed bulky waste transfer for town residents entering the transfer station.
Yeah, I would agree that if the town, if the businesses aren't going to get any kind of notification until they get their first bill, then it's not going to impact anything if we put it into effect today, tomorrow, 7th.
Okay.
And I think posting it at the transfer station for the residents in three weeks from now.
Correct. And on the website, we'll make sure.
Yeah, the website and signboard.
I can kind of freelance motion here.
Yes, sure, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
As far as the motions concerned, what it says is neither of these motions will not require, that's a double negative.
I know, I saw that, yes.
Well, yeah, got too fancy there.
That's okay.
That's all right, Joe.
All right. So we'll move to approve the revised fees as proposed in this memorandum, specifically the increase for residents at the transfer station from 9.5, 9.45 cents to 10.5 cents per pound, and that will become effective September 26th with notice to be given at the transfer station.
And the website.
And the website. And the second of these increases is proposing to increase the charge to commercial haulers from $64 a ton to $66.25 a ton, to become effective tomorrow, September, September 7th immediately.
For a second?
And neither, neither of the motions requires Board of Finance approval or a town meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Joe, while you're up there?
Yes.
The next item.
You'd love to know what a metal plus plow system is.
Yeah.
Sure, we're talking in a 90-degree day about a piece of plowing equipment, but let me tell you why my staff, our master mechanic, who came to town about over a year ago now from town of Cromwell, he had one of these in Cromwell, by the way, he's fantastic, is extremely efficient, has done a masterful job with the fleet, they had one of these in Cromwell. What it is, this is an all, we don't have anything like this. This, it's a plow attachment you put on, you put on a payloader, but we have a 14-foot snowbox, you can't drive over the road with it, it's not legal to drive, it's way too wide. This one, because, and I put a little picture, it's a little thing that you put on there so you can kind of imagine what type is that.
This wasn't colored though.
This, oh, this squeezes down, so you can drive it, so we can attach this to a plow plow, and anything over four or five inches or so, because if we all remember, like, we're the backup for the Board of Ed, too, if there was a big snowstorm, and we would have to go in with all our artillery, because they don't have any money to do it. So this unit can do parking lots and intersections and roads in a fifth of the time, because it extends the wings, it's in a loader, it can push everything, we don't have anything like it. So this would be a huge value to the town to have something like this. One of the other things, why they're called a live edge, the new technology in plows, if you, if you think of a plow, it has just one edge, and roads aren't smooth, they have crowns in them, and they have all kinds of undulations, when it goes over, that's what leaves all the snow pack, then you have to throw, you know, tons and tons of salt to get it down to black. These live edges actually can form to the road. So when you could bring this 14-foot piece of equipment, it drops down, it forms to the road, and it scrapes everything up, and you don't almost need to use any salt because of your black pavement right away. So we could take this, we could bring it to cul-de-sacs, it's on roads, if we have a real big storm, blizzards or anything like that, this would be the powerhouse piece of equipment, we don't have anything like it. And so, you know, it can do the job of three trucks, you could have one person driving this one piece of equipment that can do everything in town as opposed to having to send three or four, so I highly recommend it. So funding, we have, when we sell our vehicles off, it's getting put in a CNRE Public Works Reserve account, we sold a lot of different pieces of equipment over the years, and this account, I've been working with the finance department on the exact, because I think there's more than 56,000, because over the last year or so, we've been selling stuff, it has to be put back in this account, so we're asking for $41,107.50. If you go into MCSJ, because I've made a printout, there's 56,589 in this account currently, but I think there's another 20 or 30,000 sitting that has to be put in there from sales of vehicles that we've done over the last year or two that I'm working with their office, it just, it was just put in a different account, so.
Joey, also, I explained, this is a state, so we don't have to.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
The bid.
Yeah, right on the thing, I gave you, I gave you the quote on it, it says state contract, so this is the state contract for it, so this is the best price you can get, so it does conform to the purchasing policy, thank you for bringing that up. And the reason I'm bringing this up in September on a 90-degree day is the sooner we can move forward, there is a lead time on these, and I'd rather have it here if we get dumped with a bunch of snow and not be sitting waiting for it, so that's why we're here today.
What is that lead time, Joe?
It's, it's a few months, so if we can get it, if we can get it ordered, and then, you know, through the cycle Board of Finance Town Meeting, we should be having it for the winter, but it is a few months out.
Other questions for Joe?
Yeah, so this, this picture we have doesn't look like anything, but I'm assuming, I'm kind of envisioning something that's got moving parts and maybe hydraulics and stuff.
Joe, you want to, why don't you bring that?
Yeah. Mine is in color.
So I'm looking at annual, yeah, so it does have hydraulic cylinders on those things?
The DFT has these on their plows, so they have some of the wing plows that go out with hydraulics, that's what this is, but it has two-foot flaps on either side, so it can stretch out to 14 feet, but you can tuck it in to 10 feet, so you can drive it over the road, but then you push it out and you can move one or the other. If you're in, if you're in the high school parking lot, you could just go to town on it as opposed to, they have a bunch of pickups, so this, and it would attach to our town. We have two payloads easy to connect, and you could just hop in and they could do any road with it and drive.
My question was towards, with the moving parts, and it doesn't look as solid as a snowplow is, if there's a life, if there's maintenance required to update those sides, if they bend, or?
Well, it's hard to say anything when plowing, because all bets are off when you're in that environment, but the person that would maintain it is the one recommending it, he's, he's used it, it's invaluable, they've gotten an extra one in Cromwell, so it, it could have some maintenance to it, but the maintenance, the, the use of it as far as outweighs any kind of issues with it, it's a very solid piece of equipment.
Okay. Other questions for Joe?
Yes, what is the anticipated lifespan of a piece of equipment such as this?
That's a great question, I'd say 12 to 15 years. If, if, because it's like last winter, it wouldn't have been used, because we didn't have any really much, but if you have any, you know, this is a piece of equipment, more than four inches, you get it out, if it's under four inches, you're not taking that on the road, but that would extend the life of it, but I'd say 12 to 15 years.
And we have two existing vehicles that this would work on?
Two existing loaders, correct.
One of the things that particularly interested me in this presentation was the ability to cut down on road salt.
Correct.
And this is something that has been a major concern of the Commission of Natural Resources in trying to get some of our salt usage decreased, so.
Correct.
This would be a big boon, I think.
And when I mentioned with the Board of Ed, if you had a big, like a foot of snow, you know, two of our big main wells in the town are right by the middle school property, you could bring that down there, it would probably be done with that, and as I said, a fifth of the time.
And you could also wait to plow a little bit longer, because.
Exactly.
You could wait, so you set your priorities.
Because it can pick up anything, the reason the pickups come in is they can't push it after a certain much, they have to keep going, this thing could go in there and clean it up in an hour.
So schools out, you can wait longer and set your priorities on the other streets, and then go back to the school when you get to it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't have, I don't have that particular chart right in front of me. How much money would be left in the account?
A minimum of 15, as I said, I put in, it's actually, you have it as the MCSJ thing, I think we have 56,600 listed in the account right now, I'm asking for 41, so that's 15. But as I said, there's a number of vehicles that we've been selling over the last year and a half that were, that, those funds were placed in another account and not the account that it was intended for, and we're just working on clarifying that right now and doing the accounting to get that in there, so there is more money coming into that account. We sold about, two years ago, we sold all of our old trackless equipment for $40,000 to North Branford, that's part of that 56 right there, so it's like trading that in for some really good piece of equipment.
Okay. Other questions for Joe?
Just, oh, yeah, last question maybe. In terms of any road damage, you know, I mean, the plows can, can damage roads from time to time, with the operator, plus the plow, whatever, but in terms of damaging roads, is, it's an advanced piece of equipment.
Safer for the roads.
Safe, better for the road.
Live edge means it's, it's not beating on the road more, because it's following the contours.
So it's flowing, it's flowing.
It's floating right on the surface as opposed to a blade that's straight and it's hitting, so this actually is much better for the roads, and the operator has a lot more control to not damage things by pulling in, if they see something coming, they could pull in the wing as opposed to popping it out, so there's, that would have a lot less damage than, than the typical piece of equipment that doesn't have the live edge nor have the articulating wings.
Thanks, Joe.
And any of our current operators would be able to use this piece of equipment?
Correct, they, they don't, whenever you get a piece of equipment like this, the vendor comes down and gets some training, and our fleet manager would be definitely part of the training to make sure the guys know how to use it, and obviously, the first few times out there, they would, we'd put the right people out there that, you know, figure out to use it, but yes, they would be trained, and they should all be able to use that.
And you mentioned that this was a state bid price?
Correct.
And so I'm assuming then that the state uses these plows as well?
I, I believe they do, I don't know if they use this very one, but, I mean, there's a state contract for, the pricing for it, but I know other towns use it, and I believe the state, I don't know if they use that specific one, but the state pricing covers equipment like this, a lot of times, it's, whatever the cost of it, it's, you know, there's a certain price over the, over the, over the equipment vendor's price, and that's what, how the state price works.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I think we're ready for motion, Ann.
Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $41,107.50 from CNRE account 32340700999, PWD, Public Works Department of Reserve, to purchase and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, rise and, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
There's the one in color that made it a lot easier for us. Moving on, Kevin, this is your turn. We always have the joy of doing the end-of-year budget transfers, so I'll give it to you, just make sure it's on.
Yep.
And make sure it was charged.
All right. If you could switch over to.
Yeah, sure.
All right. So I apologize for this being, you know, 200-something line, or 230 lines of data, but my goal is, for the next fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in, we're going to do these quarterly. So, so we're preparing right now, so next month, or, well, in November, early November, your first meeting, we'll be presenting the quarter one fiscal '24 budget request. So with that said, so end of 2020, fiscal year 2022, the budget did not include an increase to salary lines, instead, the town as a whole budgeted about $373,000 for salary contingency, so that had to be broken out. So that's why each of these lines, every line with salaries, has monies put in, because the salaries from fiscal year '22 were the same as fiscal year '23 salaries, so we had to have done, you know, a transfer at some point.
And also mention that we just didn't decide, that was through contract negotiations and so forth like that.
Correct, correct.
We were, we didn't know what the increase was going to be, which is why that money was put in the salary contingency.
Correct, yep, and that was, that was all done before I got here. And then also in here, there's some items, so this includes any accounts that were over budget, so you'll see, most of them, the majority of these are, are wage lines, but there are some that are non-wage lines. So just whether there was, like, you know, just an example, salary or transportation allowance, you know, there's a couple extra bucks there, so we moved some things, book binding, you know, the budgets are very tight, we're budgeting to the dollar in some of these accounts, well, as, as we're finding out, inflation is just not, you know, a January or a December thing, you know, people are just adding these price increases right along, so for instance, for the tax collector, we had to do, we had to find $103 to increase for the book binding that we have to do, that's literally the giant grand list book that we put together, you know, historically, it was under 1,500 bucks, this year it came in at 1,663. So, and we have a ton of these little, you know, $100, $100, $30, $133, there's some larger ones in there, but without going line by line, does anyone have any questions to kind of attack this?
Is the, is the goal to get everything to 100%?
No, no, but.
You're in closing, it seemed like that's what you would do.
So the idea would get, so I don't want the accounts over expended, right? So you'll see some accounts, like right here, just looking at that screen, we looked at that, the overtime line in building was only 77% expended, you know, they had a $1,500 budget, they spent $116, the only reason it's 77% expended is because I moved 1,300 out of that line. So I had to do this at the end of the year, just because we had a few things, like we knew that, you know, throughout the year, the police overtime was going to be high, so that was about $100,000, $110,000, I believe. We knew we had savings in the chief building official right there for $10,000, the IT director we hired later, then the beginning of the year, so we knew we had some accounts that were over budget throughout the year that we were watching, and we knew we had accounts that were under budget, that we were kind of making sure, you know, cancel each other out, so to speak. So, so yeah, going forward in fiscal '24, we want to do this quarterly instead of a year-end, so every quarter, it'll be a much smaller packet, so currently, we have, I know of three transfers that are sitting, waiting to be approved by you guys in the first week of November. So it'll be a lot less than this, because in the budget, in the budget cycle, in the fiscal year '24 budget cycle we did, we included that GWI for the non-affiliated, there will be a big breakout for the police and fire, I believe we, we did the, so the police and fire, the union negotiations were.
I wouldn't say a big breakout, I mean, we, it came within where we anticipated it.
When I say big break, I mean, you know, I have to.
Yeah.
Project out when I say big, it's, we, we budgeted for that, so, so that's just kind of the methodology here.
So the accounts that you move money out of.
Yeah.
The ones that have negatives, you use those to offset your increases in other areas?
Correct.
And you didn't try to get everything to 100% at the end of the year, you just got everything to be less than 100%.
So if an account had an overage, you know, obviously, I talked to the department head, made sure there, you know, we understood why there was an overage, and then, like, I can just show you, so I did a little, so these are the accounts money came from, right? So we took the majority of the money, 360,000 from that salary contingency line, and I zeroed that out. Workers' comp, we, the budget was a little high, so I transferred 60,000 out of there, so there's some accounts here where I, where I transferred money out besides just that first, you know, the salary contingency line, is that kind of what your question was?
No.
What was your question, can you rephrase the question?
I guess, at a high level, what's the goal of this exercise?
To make, I think it's to make sure nothing comes in, every, here again.
Well, the goal of this exercise, audit purposes, we can't have an account over expended, so that, this is just housekeeping.
But you've got training in 103%.
216, no, I vetted all these, don't, there might be something, there could have been enough, that's something there, if I pulled it up, I bet it, it's not 103%.
So the goal is to get everything less than 100%?
Correct, yep, for audit purposes.
For all the, everything that's underage, underage, nice word, everything that's under, you're using that to offset the overage?
Correct, yep.
And as long as everything's less than 100%, we claim success.
It was well under 100%.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, there's, there's, there's a good pocket of cash left over at the end of the year, I'm currently working through that to close this one out, but working on closing 22 out first, so.
No rush.
We're, we're making progress.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Ms. Santoro?
Yes, I remember asking Ms. Johnson, your predecessor, the same question, do you, is this tool, is, can this, these transfers and this data help you going forward for, directly for budgeting purposes next year? I mean, do you, do you rely on it, do you, I mean?
Well, so this is included. Well, so this is included, when you look at the, that front budget work paper, right, the budget worksheet, it has the original budget and then it has the adopted budget, or the, I'm sorry, you know, obviously the original is the adopted, then there's the adjusted or amended budget. And that's kind of where the next year's budget gets based off of, if I'm not mistaken, or there's two numbers there, so you can kind of see the original budget and then the amendments that have happened throughout the year.
And what I, what we always do when we start on the budget is, well, you'll sit down and say, this is what the department heads request, and you'll say, what did you expend like last year? And we'll take a couple of years, look back to see, okay, this is sent, made sense. So we do, we do obviously base it on what we have done in the past.
I wish I had it up, because I, I will show you, there's that work paper, the budget workbook, that has, I believe, at least ten years of data backed, you know, into that. So I do look at that when I see something that's a little askew, we do click and, and kind of dig into the weeds there a little bit.
I mean, so beside for, besides avoiding overages in departments, you know, using this as a tool, this...
Well, so, just to give you some flavor, flavor, but, you know, a little oversight of why this, we have to do these transfers, our accounting system will not let us process a journal entry or a disbursement. We can't issue a check if the account has, is a penny over the hundred percent. So like I, I mentioned, we have three transfers coming down the pike. I have to move the money before I go to you guys because I can't pay that bill. And so if it takes, you know, two months between the Board of Select and the Board of Finance, and then if it's over that threshold, the town meeting, you know, that could be two months where a vendor, you know, if we had to pay a bill, they're like, where's the money? So, so there's a little timing issue there, but I've tried documenting as best I can, so satisfy any, you know, internal control issues.
Thanks.
Could Ann have any questions?
Oh, do you want to switch to the computer screen?
Yes, okay.
Hold on here, let me see if I can click this out. I think you have to click computer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I may have to click it twice.
Right up here. Okay, back to there, okay.
Ann, do you have any questions? Will you...
Nope, so this is, no, no extra money. This is, these are accounts that were, you know, obviously all budgeted. Some accounts had some monies left over, so I've used those monies to, I guess I can't show it, you're there, but, so the, the salary contingency line, workers' comp, we had some extra, the insurance line, there was some extra, and then some director's salary lines that we hired them later in the year, there was some money left over. So this isn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't find this money, we knew about these pockets of money, and we knew we had some accounts that had overages. Like we knew the police overtime line, there was some, we have a couple sergeants that are out.
Actually, we had, there were, at one time, there were six officers, between officers and sergeants, out injured.
Yep.
So that...
Oh, so I, I see what your question is. This, this is, this is zeroed out, right? So the, the transfers in match the transfers out, right? So that's, that's why what I'm saying, so say it's, you know, five hundred thousand of transfers in, there's a matching number of transfers out, right? So at the, at the end of the day, this is a zero journal entry. So does that, does that kind of make sense? So it's not additional appropriation, we're just moving budgeted monies from the original budgeted account into a new budgeted account, is all we're doing. Nope, 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 all in the same year. So imagine if the finance department had a hundred dollars in office supplies and we needed to move it to travel reimbursement, it's just a transfer out of office supplies, transfer into, what did I just say?
Travel.
Travel. Yeah, yeah, it's just a transfer in, transfer out, expense to expense. So we're not increasing the budget, we're not reducing the budget, it's all just moving one line to another.
And you're not actually moving money, you're just...
Yeah, no money's being moved.
Yeah, you're just keeping it differently.
Yeah, this is just a housekeeping item, the money's already spent. It's been spent for two, you know, over, you know, fourteen months now, or twelve, you know, twelve months. But, but that money's spent, we're just doing this housekeeping to, to make sure, you know, the, the books look clean and look good. So. Correct, this is for an internal, internal control thing on top of the system we already have, so.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin?
I think we're ready for motion. Okay, move to approve the year-end transfer worksheet provided by Finance Director Gervais.
Is there a second? One second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions and a carries unanimously. Moving on, the, thank you, Kevin. Subdivision regulations for the Planning Commission are going to be reviewed coming up on the nineteenth at their meeting. And here again, we don't have the ability to pass them or change them, but we can comment on them. So I asked Gary to come to us, our planner, to come to us and give us an oversight of what is being planned as far as changes and any other areas you think that might need to be looked at.
Hi, good evening. All right, so just quickly, not to belabor it, as First Selectman said, September nineteenth will be the public hearing, seven PM in this room. The Planning Commission will be considering a number of changes to the subdivision regulations, particularly Sections four, six, Section seven, Section eight, and Section eleven. Section four in particular, the big one here, is taxes. Currently, applicants can make application for subdivision and the back taxes are not necessarily due or required to have been paid in order for them to make that application. Like a building permit, in order to get a building permit, the taxes have to be paid. So we felt that we would add some language to the regulations that require that the taxes be paid up current before you make your application. So that's section, new Section four dash two dash fifteen. That was also a request from Diane Vitaleano and our tax collector, Christine Dixon. The other big section is, again, is Section four, Section four dash seven two, revisions to lot line configurations. This regulation allows the planning director to approve lot line revisions. However, it does not give them the authority to deny them. So we had to take a lot line revision that needed, essentially, it sat on my desk for a year, we ended up in front of the Planning Commission with it. I denied it and there, the opposing legal counsel said, your regulations aren't specific and say you can't do that, so that's an act of the Planning Commission. So we ended up going there. So to correct that, I think if that's, if the director can approve the plan, I think they should be able to deny the same plan they approved if it's not conforming to the regulations. And again, in Section four, the ERT, this was an issue, we actually have some pending litigation still floating out there regarding the ERT as a requirement for...
Why, explain what ERT is.
Yes, Environmental Review Team would do a, an assessment of the subject parcel, typically prior to the subdivision. So it's a full biological and environmental review of the parcel, identifies any endangered species on the site or plant flora and fauna. However, the ERT is a separate agency and organization and there's King's Mark and I forget the other, that covers the, the other side of the state. Anyway, they indicated to us that they cannot do an ERT for this one particular application. They submitted that information in, the applicant submitted that information into the record. The ERT also requires the municipality to request the review. So here we're asking applicants to submit a report that requires the town to request in addition to the fact that the agency will no longer do them for subdivisions. If municipalities would like them to be conducted outside of a subdivision application, they're more than happy to entertain that. So unfortunately, it looks like the regs are what they are, black and white and a literal interpretation based on the last decision from the courts. So we'll see where the case goes. I believe it's, I think briefs, if they haven't already been filed. So with that in mind, I, Town Council had recommended the Planning Commission just completely omit the section requiring the ERT. With that said, the Planning Commission was not comfortable with that and wanted something in return, so I basically put in this entire section that would say that they would need an environmental review and evaluation, which essentially comes down to an environmental impact statement that the applicant would prepare, submit to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would be the reviewer of that document in conjunction with the Natural Resources Commission, which is kind of big language in terms of, we're now going to reach out to our other commission for comment, a referral back to the Planning Commission on, on that evaluation. So I think that's appropriate. Other sections, they're more like housekeeping items, light pole locations, light fixture compliance with dark skies, things like that. And then in particular, in my discussions with the First Selectman on open space dedication, we added specifically that we were very clear as to what that open space purpose is, as well as that it's preserved in perpetuity. We're not changing the entities that can accept that open space as they are, they would be qualifying entities, they're not, such as the land trust and/or some other nonprofit. For instance, there's the Woodsmen's Trust, I think in Waterford, New England Forestry Foundation, they own some property here in town. So they're all nonprofits that could accept open space if the applicant was to negotiate that with them. Obviously, the town, the state are also entities that can accept open space. And with that, we add any, we added warranty Ds and restrictive covenants. These things need to be submitted with the application, not post. So that's something that we can ensure. One of the things that I've noticed historically is that we have some open spaces that were approved as open space, but there were no easements filed. So hopefully that would alleviate some of that, that issue. Again, some more housekeeping moving, some text around, creating a new section, but it's the same language. We're adding to dead end streets, the term conservation design development, they didn't have any dead end street length, like cutoff, so we had to add just that one term into this section, pretty simple. So now conservation design developments do have a street length cutoff at two thousand feet. And then we, the other big change will be Section eleven, eleven dash three, and the Planning Commission wanted to create a section for fines for violations that the commission may issue. It's very generic language, they understand that they would have to approach the board and go through a whole ordinance for the fines if they wanted to, but they figured the language is there ahead of time where they would have the ability to do that, they can then request the town considering ordinance for fines for violations of the subdivision regulations. So those are the changes that are to be coming. If there's any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or my office. Copies of the regulations are available on the town website and with the town clerk, they've been filed accordingly pursuant to statute prior, ten days prior to our public hearing, which again is on the nineteenth, so I think we're good two weeks out.
Right.
We've already referred it out to a number of departments and other agencies and commissions for consult and review, so we'll, we'll see what we get back. But the changes that they'll be discussing will be just confined to those sections. For instance, Section five has not been discussed here and there'll be no change. So if something came up in discussion, we'd have to hold another public hearing to make a change to that chapter.
Any questions for Gary?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the...
Okay, well, Ann, I'll do Roseanne, then up to you, Ann.
I'd like to go back to the discussion of the ERT.
Yes.
I'm very pleased to see that the Natural Resources Commission will be considered as an advisory group. And I'm wondering, as I was sitting here thinking about it, whether we might include the aquifer protection...
Agency.
Agency as well, which of course, right now is in the realm of zoning commission, but it is, it actually has its own separate meetings for aquifer protection. So I just toss that out there as a suggestion. I'm also interested in the subdivisions and the dead end streets. We have a recent, fairly recent development in town, which has a large number of units, and there are a large number of dead end streets in that development where there is no cul-de-sac, no turnaround, and the only way to get off those streets is to turn around in somebody else's driveway or back your way out. And so I would like to ask that that be given some consideration. Now, if this happens, are you saying that we, if any of these changes are suggested, that we would then have to have a new public hearing?
No, well, the, the changes are substantially different than those that have been listed in the legal ad. So I can make changes to all the sections that we've identified, Section four, six, seven, eight, and eleven.
Well, I consider that that problem really falls within the area also of public safety. And having driven through that development several times, I, I really find it difficult that if there were a major fire or anything, that we could get significant equipment in there with the number of dead end roads that they have.
Are they, are they town roads?
They're within that development.
Which development are we?
I prefer not to name it.
Okay, because if it's a town road, but if it's a private road, that would be something different, because there's several developments like Catskill and so forth that are not public roads.
Correct. So in those, those developments, which are approved by typically the zoning commission as a special permit, commercial, multifamily, commercial development, those would be, have the hammerhead ends typically are much more narrow and you don't have the twenty-five foot curb to curb pave width usually. Our regulations do allow for reduced curb to curb pave width down to eighteen feet in a conservation design development. Again, that's, if the developer chooses to do so based on utilities, if the subdivision requires sidewalk, we, at a minimum, we still require the fifty-foot right of way, even though we'll allow for a reduced pave width. So depending on the circumstances, the commission would exercise their discretion as to whether or not they wanted to reduce the pave width to eighteen feet or keep it wider, knowing though at the end of a cul-de-sac or dead end, we need enough turning radius for vehicles and particularly a fire truck to turn around. So usually the fire marshal will review those plans and let us know whether or not this proposed road would, would in fact meet that criteria.
Thank you.
Angie Calab, you want to...
I think if I understand the correction, that the question is whether or not we've accounted for any, if with this commission having to review that report, is there a time issue? That's a good comment. The way the language is written is just says that the, the land to be subdivided will be subject to an environmental review and evaluation by the Planning Commission and the East Line Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. So I think by noting that there's a time issue there, we're going to need a response back before the commission, the Planning Commission has to render a decision on a application. They have sixty-five days to do that unless they're holding a public hearing. So that's well noted, so I'll note those two things we'll have to address.
Okay.
I wasn't envisioning a joint meeting to review an application, I was just thinking the Natural Resources Commission, they are by statute an advisory commission to essentially the town, so we can utilize their expertise and we'd be just getting a report from them on their review, similar to staff. Yes. Correct, yes, good point, thank you.
Okay, other comments?
Actually, I have one, or a question, Gary. The natural, the deep natural diversity database?
Yes.
So is that, I, I had to substitute ex officio at the Conservation of, for Natural Resources meeting recently, and that was a topic of conversation. So is that integral to what the environmental review team would be considering?
Yes, that's like, that would be where you start. So you'd request from DEEP, you can go in and actually look at the database and you're going to see if your property falls within a shaded circle within the state. If it does, you're going to ask them, okay, tell me what those endangered species or species of special concern are. Do I need to do further evaluation? DEEP will determine whether or not that's required. Do I need to do further evaluation and depo determine whether or not that's required? They may, and if they have to, they'll have to go through that whole process and study, furnish that to the DEEP. So it's a bit of a pro, it's not, doesn't mean it's, the development's prohibited, it's just a big hoop to jump through.
Okay.
But that's, that's where they start, is with the NDB. And it was also recommended by the Natural Resources Commission that the wetland agency consider adding some language to their regulations-
Yes.
-requesting the NDB.
This was a topic of conversation at the last meeting, yes.
Okay.
And that they wanted to make sure that there was an interconnectedness between the various agencies, even though they know they don't have certain authorities and, you know, but they understand that they recommend, they make recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, thanks.
You're welcome.
Bill, anything?
No, I watched most of us unfold, as it was unfolding, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, Gary, thank you, and I think you've got, and you've got my input too, so, so thank you for bringing this to us, and we'll see you on the 19th.
See you that Friday.
Actually, I'll probably see you tomorrow, but, meeting was, so anyway, so, okay. And thank you for your inputs and that, you know, and Roseanne, some of the comments, you know, that gets the Conservation of Natural Resources back in that advisory to where, you know, they have input now. So I think that's one of the things that, you know, in the charter revision that came out, so we could already see benefit to that, so thank you. Moving on, we have a few appointments to boards and commissions. One of them, Wanda Stasic has been a volunteer up at the Brookside Farm Museum for quite a while, and she came in and she had talked with some of the members there and wishes to be a member. The opening she would fill only is till January, but she said she's also to be reappointed. Same with Steve Dinsmore, who would like to get on the Conservation of Natural Resources Commission, and his term would expire in 2024 as well, but he'd like to get on as an alternate. And the last one, Greg McIntyre, as a member of the Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Committee. We had a, John Schweizer was appointed to that, and I had checked the voting list, and he was on it for this town. The town clerks have a better one, and they pointed out to me after we did that, that oops, he is, he was, but he is no longer a registered voter or elector for the town, so he stepped back, and Mr. McIntyre has volunteered and stepped up, and he actually attended the first meeting, but in a non-voting status. So that's it.
What was, what was Mr. Schweitzer's address? Do we know that offhand?
Uh, it was 40-something Shore Drive.
Okay, so this is-
Shore Road.
Okay, so this is Mr. McIntyre's-
Yeah, he's taking the, basically, he was representing Oak Grove, Mr. McIntyre would be doing the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Good point.
Just remember, we're trying to keep a balance there.
Right, not, which is what it was, so.
And as far as the party affiliation-
Yeah, party affiliations are, yeah, I mean, that is mostly on affiliates on that, so not a problem.
Okay, so we can begin-
Right.
-move to appoint Wanda, Wanda Stasic, 109 Grassy Hill Road, East Lawn, Connecticut, as a member of the Brookside Farm Museum Commission, with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024.
A second?
Second.
Actually, we could do it all in one motion. Let's do that, it's, yeah.
Okay, and move to approve, to appoint Stephen Dinsmore, 57 Chesterfield Road, East Lawn, Connecticut, as an alternate member of the Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources, with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024. And third, move to appoint Gregory McIntyre, 41 Shore Road, Nyantuck, Connecticut, as a member of the Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded. Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sentenced? Carry, unanimously, and thank you to those people for volunteering their time. That completes our action items. Gary, if you want to head home, you've had a long day, so you're good.
Thank you.
Take tomorrow off.
No.
No.
No. Okay, ex officio, Roseanne.
I don't have a report this evening.
Okay. Anne?
Yeah, Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Committee was formed and had its first meeting on August 14th. We will have our next meeting on September 12th, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, which in an agenda will be published forthwith. A very good meeting to start, you know, a number of the members were present. I and Gary Caccello will be the co-chairs of the committee. So in this next meeting, we will be hearing from our department heads, zoning, building, and fire marshal, about their experiences in the town on the issue of short-term rentals and their impressions and their thoughts, so, and we will also discuss some other literature that will be distributed to the, to the members. There will be our first of two required public hearings, one at the beginning of the process, one at the end, before we make recommendations, of course, to board's selectmen. That public hearing will be on Monday, September 25th, 7:00 PM, and for now, this room is reserved. If we get the sense that we need a different space, we can move, but at least we have a home, so that should be helpful. And I think the thinking was, let's get some information going, let's, before we have the public hearing, for the public's benefit as well as for the members. And that's it for me.
Okay.
We've seen four calls in the Brooks Office Day, people asking about-
Okay, good. Okay.
And one of your things that you're going to do early on is develop a timeline to see whether or not that, when that was going to be completed?
So at the meeting, we did discuss timeline, and it was agreed that a final report would be done in January, post-election, new administration, et cetera. So, and just to give ourselves some time to, to information gather, gather. I think the feeling was that, you know, we need to identify issues and, you know, sort of from an evidentiary point of view, not just anecdotal information. And in fact, another person that we're requesting to come before us is Chief Mike or some other representative from the police department as well, so.
That's what I thought when we were first talking about that, whether you wouldn't be able to create a timeline until after, you know, the scope, and you have to kind of pull your stuff in to know who you have-
Right, but at least we have, we know that it is a longer timeline than initially thought or anticipated, so.
No, no meetings since last, our last meeting.
Okay, and nothing from you, Anne?
No.
Okay. Okay, just moving along, update on closing early on Fridays. Couple days where it, like, people got in, we forgot to lock the doors or stuff like that, but it had worked out really well, not a problem. And that four to five timeframe, we are seeing people coming in, and it, what it does also do is give staff a time to catch up on all the stuff that's going on during the day. So it, I think it's working out well for the community as well as the staff, very much so. Brooke, you're happy with it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anyway, moving on, Route 161 exits 74, they're going to be back doing some blasting. They had only been doing about one a day, sometimes twice. They had a little bit of problem, this is with the contractor with their app, some people were getting notifications, some people weren't about the upcoming blast, but it seems to be under control. They're taking advantage of the weather to get as much done as they possibly can, they'll probably go well into November, maybe a little beyond that, depending upon the weather. So they're pretty much on schedule right now. When they do shut down, they've really come up with a good way to do it. They make sure that people going southbound, they shut it off at the split so people can't sneak off of Exit 75 and, and get through the four corners, so they keep it right there. So it works out quite well. And attended with me, we had a Millstone drill a week ago, when? Today, at the Emergency Operations Center, went really well. The person there said, you know, it was as close to perfect as could be done, so kudos to Chief and Julie Wilson, our Emergency Management Director and Assistant Emergency Management Director, for what they did. It was really well done. The statue in the McCooks Park has been moved in the area, which will become the Nyonic Tribe's burial ground, that has been moved, and we're looking at moving some of the other trees that have been put there and so forth like that. That has been conveyed to the archaeologists for the tribe as well. So moving on there, we have completed the police contract, it needs to go for vote by them, so my thoughts would be, my guess would be at our next meeting, we will vote to approve the police contract. And had a couple of department heads show, Bregal, myself, got a tour of Camp Net by the new CO over there, basically wants to see what, feel that we're in the town, they can help each other out. Joe had some good ideas for them, so it worked out really well. Regarding Hathaway Farms, Oscar Hills, and Brandon Road, I contacted our attorneys, they've presented the offer to them, as we've talked, waiting to hear back, but he said that there's nothing indicated that it won't be accepted. And as we've talked about the dates, we're looking at having a public hear, you know, having some dates in a public hearing on the 27th, there's some requirements as to how early we have to advertise that. And then we would approve moving it to Finance on the 4th of October, Finance would meet on the 5th to act on it. And then, depending upon how it works out, either the 17th or the 19th for a referendum by ballot, as we said, we want to do it then because it would be much too difficult for the registrars if we tried to separate that on the same day as Election Day. Also, I know a few of us attended the Giving Garden up at the North End and Town across from the Baptist Church on Church Lane. This year, they anticipate giving 10,000 pounds of food, five tons, to the needy. And just the whole process they have of teaching people about how to garden, it was, Anne, I think you'd agree, very impressive. And they have some lecture series coming up too, that we, you know, we'll definitely try and do what we can, you know, post on the signboard and website for people to learn about, you know, not using pesticides, and maybe weeds are not such a bad thing after all, if you're in a garden, so it really worked well. Touch a Truck is this weekend at McCooks from 9:00 to 2:00. I think 9:00 to 10:00 is the quiet hours, where they won't be blaring the sirens, but from 10:00 to 2:00, expect a lot of sirens and horns blowing, but the kids love it and the adults do too. Our next meeting also too will be having a presentation on a couple of things, the Darrell Pond Study, they're ready to report out to us. And also Sarah Furman is going to come with a couple of members of the Youth Coalition to talk about youth and family services, about wanting to have something that, we're one of the very few towns in the state that does not have a dedicated youth and family agency and what they'd like to do, and some ideas for funding too. We have some opiate funding and so forth like that, money we can use, so they're here for presentation. Last Friday, Tip a Cop went very successful at Family Pizza, a lot of people they came in, and all the tips that the police officers got went to Special Olympics, so they did a really good job of raising some money. This week, or coming up, the Oyster Festival on the 23rd of the month, be after our next meeting, but just to do it from 12:00 to 6:00. And this Friday, we have three things, if people want to do something. We have the gala for the children's event for 6:00 to 10:00. East Lawn football season kicks off at 6:30, and then Fusion is up in the ban shell from 6:00 to 8:00. I couldn't decide which one I wanted to go to until Holly Cheeseman told me which one I was going to. So, if you're listening, Holly, I'm joking. So that was it. So that's the extent of my report, no communications. Is there any public comment at this point in time? Barbara, you can come up?
Thank you.
In your name, net your name and address again.
Barbara Booth, 34 Riverview Road, Nyonic. Mrs. Hardy was mentioning about road safety, and that's what I was concerned about. Is there anything that, on Riverview Road, that we can do to slow the traffic down? We do have one sign, an electronic sign, that posts that you're speeding, but I think that's only on one side of the road, we need it on both sides of the road because they're going in both directions, and we have more homes being built in the area, and I have more traffic going up and down the road now, and they're speeding. They don't slow down. Some people slow down, they obey, but other people, they just, they just fly by. So I don't know if there's anything else, do I go to another meeting? Do I go to the police department meeting, or?
Once you're done, I will answer, I'll respond to your question.
Okay, I'm done.
No, you have, once you're done commenting, then I respond.
This is, I'm all done, I'm finished with-
Okay. I'll def, I'll make the chief aware of this. Unfortunately, if you go to any town in the country, just drive down 161, people are driving, I've never seen, and I was a law enforcement officer 28 and a half years, I never saw as much rec, and I want to say reckless, but, you know, aggressive driving, I think, is what it's become. I mean, instead of slowing down and letting someone come out of an intersection, you speed up to make sure they can't.
Yes.
Or people, okay, I'm going to get in front of you, you better hit your brakes. I mean, I see more of that than I have ever. And I, I think the signs are the best way to do it, to say that we can have somebody up there on a daily basis, but if you make your comments or concerns known to the chief, I'm sure he'll do what he can to try and get someone up there for enforcement.
Well, what I'm concerned is that we can just get one of those electronic signs on both sides of the road that would slow people down in both directions, if that's possible, so.
We, we only have so many, we try to spread them around, around town. We can probably take that one and flip it around, but it won't stay there all the time, because-
No, that would be wonderful though, to even-
We could see about doing that, too.
-to do that, because somebody in their mind would think that possibly that sign is there, and again, that would trigger them to slow down. And I did call the state because I was concerned about the marijuana use, and I was concerned about what that impact has on people that are driving. As you said, more and more people are speeding and they're more aggressive, and I'm just concerned if that had anything in relation to do with marijuana that they're taking. And I couldn't get any statistics on that, so they didn't respond, they didn't want me to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Regarding marijuana, there's really no, tests can only tell that you've taken it within a several week period. To my knowledge, there's still nothing that you can use to detect recent use in that, like you can alcohol, that was one of the problems we always had, and that, and we had a sign, most of these, signs do have logs, so you'll know what people's speeds are. And I remember putting, we had one up in Salem, and I had just finished putting it up, as I'm getting back in the car, someone saw it and wanted to see how fast they could go. And it went, and unfortunately, those aren't calibrated, so I couldn't do anything about it because of the fact that, you know, the speed limit I saw up there, I couldn't really enforce, but, you know, I think most people, the Basque majority people do ease up on their speed when they see that, so. I know we, there's money to buy another sign in this year's budget. Public Works buys them and puts them around, but we're consulting the police chief and the police officers as well.
The visibility on that road is poor, I can't imagine people speeding down there.
No, of course not.
We had multiple signs for a time, I wonder-
The move, I mean, I mean, on trailers?
Yeah.
Those are extremely expensive.
What happened to the ones we had?
They just wear out eventually. I mean, I mean, the lifespan on those is not that long, I mean, probably like seven years.
And you need a piece of shoulder to put them on.
And here again, they are, they are expensive, and, you know, if you throw it on a trailer, you have to find a good place to put it, so.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one other question. Is it possible to get, I don't know who I would get the sign from, where it says children are playing, it's those little dolly things that-
Those are commercially bought, we have some signs, you know, the best thing to do is talk to, we'll see if we have any of those.
Okay, because that would slow them down on my side. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.